Guide us and direct us in our decisions, and be thoughtful and kind and find peace and guidance and grace in your life. Richard, amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge.
I plead to the flag of the United States of America, into its own rightful station, and its one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine of this world.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. It's good to see everyone out. It's good to see the ROTC out tonight. We're going to, I think, hear a little bit more about them, so thank you all for being here. So as we call the meeting to order, I need an approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye? And that brings us to the good news section. The good news tonight will be from, from Mr. Rose.
All right. Thank you, board members. We know that we have been blessed with a tremendous ROTC program. We see them volunteering throughout our community, and we see the great work that you all do, and we do appreciate that. They had another opportunity to shine tremendously. We had a drill competition at Morrisville High School on Saturday, April 2nd, 2022. And I will just read off these recognition levels for you, and we do have a certificate for each of these that we will be sharing with Master Sergeant Grogan here in just a moment. First place, an armed platoon. First place, an armed squad. First place, an unarmed platoon. First place, an unarmed squad. First place, individual. Third place, color guard. And first place, overall. And I believe that would be a sweep, correct?
Just about.
Just about, yes. So at this time, I would ask Master Sergeant Grogan to please come see Ms. McGee and receive these certificates. And I'll ask also if you would stay up there with us. We'll do some pictures here in just a moment. Don't worry, we're getting the students up here, too.
And let me just say, I, this, I can see that unless Master Sergeant starts commanding orders, we're going to have people running into this pole. So if he does not call your name, but you have to get up to let somebody else, go ahead and get up, let somebody out, and just stand standing until your name's called, so everybody comes out without having to try to let everybody crawl over everybody. I know those rows are kind of tight.
All right, so I will go ahead and begin calling the cadets who participated. First up, Nathan Grogan. Next up, Joshua Rice.
And that is a relation, and I'll claim it.
Next, Taylor Thornton. Next up, Ben Roethrock. Wes Copenhagen.
Master Sergeant, Wes Copenhagen was our individual overall champion. Is that correct? First place out of several hundred cadets there that day.
Next, Charlie McGee. Casey Frye. Greg Grasso. Julian Mendetta. Howard Utter. Michael Rogers. Reed Lavengood. And Daniel Ogburn. And while they are coming up for pictures, I would just like to reiterate one more time, there's a lot of different committees that I serve on through the county, and when they look for volunteers to help with things, we constantly reach out to you all. You're a wonderful resource for this community. I can't thank you enough for the work you do for, I mean, with our King Chamber of Commerce, all the other organizations within our county that work with you. So thank you so much for the hard work that you do. Let's give these cadets a round of applause, please. And-
Master Sergeant, Master Sergeant, before y'all leave, I don't want to take, I just want to get your attention before, so you could get back to the mic.
Before you leave, Dr. Rice celebrated a birthday this past Saturday, and we have some birthday cake left over. If your guys maybe would come over and help us dispose of that? Yes, that would be great. So we'll take a, we'll take a quick, we'll take a quick five-minute recess and let them get them some cake before they leave.
Hey, get it and come out. So, Dr. Rice, so they have to push-ups for their own birthdays, and they do push-ups for ours. So may I ask, how old are you?
Fifty, half a hundred.
So tomorrow, game on.
I thought you were going to say Dr. Rice.
I was scared. I thought you were going to put me on the spot to do fifty. I'll do twenty-five cents or two.
Did they knock it out?
Cute boys, weren't they?
That was all the good news. Okay, we call the meeting back to order. Next on our agenda would be the consent agenda. Need a motion for approved consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? The, do we have, do we have a correction to those minutes?
Yes, we do, we do have one correction to those minutes. I apologize for not bringing that up before you made that motion, but we do have a correction in minute section B, the special section. We need to change a few titles there, but that's the only correction.
Okay. So do you want to, we need a motion maybe to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Okay, I do that.
Okay, do I have a second?
Again.
Okay, all in favor? Discussion agenda, discussion of facility bids. Mr. Goins?
Yes, board members, in your packet, you should have the bid tabulation for the South Stokes Cooler Freezer. I'll start with that one. We had forty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this project. We bid the project out. The low bid came in at fifty-three thousand eight sixty-one oh nine. I talked to Ms. Moore. She said we feel like comfortable we could do this, just take the balance out of fund balance. That's a difference of eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and nine cents. There may be some additional costs once we remove the box. To cut down on box maintenance is going to be remove the old box. And then we have to look at the concrete pad to see if it can be leveled. It could just be ground. Worst-case scenario, it'd have to be busted out and repoured, but we won't know that until we remove the old box. The other item is the South Stokes High School project for the autotech and the air conditioner in the Fire Academy. Last year, I received a quote from the engineer on the cost of this. It was just over thirty-two thousand dollars. I put forty thousand dollars in the budget. We bid this project out. The low bid came in at one hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. As you know, we went around and we looked at some options to do this. One option would be just take this funding and just put the air conditioner in the Fire Academy room and look at the school using another classroom as an option and for either Fire Academy and/or the autotech classroom. And just leave the shop area in the autotech as is. Are there any questions? If not, I'd like to, if we could get both of these moved to the action agenda. And one note, on the South Stokes Cooler Freezer project, the lead time on the box itself is thirty weeks. We were looking at doing this project over the summer, but it looks like we're going to be doing it around Christmas.
What are we moving to, the action agenda on the, on the autotech Fire Academy?
And that's what I was going to say. We need to bid that project out. We need to-
Well, do I just need consent to get that done because it was originally to put the wall and air conditioner autotech? Is it just the consent of the board that we just move forward, just putting air conditioner in the?
Well, we'll still need to bid that project out.
Yes.
So we'll need to rebid that project. If the board consents to the modified, of the change of this, then we can bid it out and then vote on that project when it comes in to the bid.
Okay.
And so our recommendation is to change, alter that project and just add air conditioner into the room that's currently used for Fire Academy until it allows to proceed in bidding a bid for that.
So is this a consensus of the board, okay with that? Do we need to vote on that?
The, the board already approved the, the base project, and so if we have the consent to modify this, we'll have that in minutes of the record.
So we do need to vote on it?
We just need consensus from the board.
Well, I think one thing the board's got to do is to, is reject all of the, is this the one that was, the bids are so far open?
Ye- yes, sir, correct. You're correct. We need to reject this bid and then go to modify, modify the project.
We need a motion to reject current bids and then to modify the project as suggested by Dr. Rice and Mr. Goins.
Do those need to be in two separate motions?
Yes. First motion is to reject all of the bids.
Make a motion to reject the bid.
Okay, I have a motion to reject the bid on the, and this is the bid for the vocational alteration?
Yes, sir.
So I have a motion to reject that bid. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
And then we would request then for action item B to be the approval of the other bid and-
Cooler freezer bid.
It's the cooler freezer bid, and then we have, if we have the consensus of the board, that we can go ahead and get a bid for the other project.
And this is, this is something we discussed in our facilities tour, Ms. Knight, and, and the bid for that project was so high that we decided we, we could probably put air conditioner in, in the Fire Academy. And then try to, try to use that one classroom for both the autotech and the Fire Academy, maybe on alternate-
Economical than proposed.
Yes, because our, our bid that we, the bid that we were hoping was about a forty thousand bid is a one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar bid. So we felt like if that was too much, there's too much cost there for what we were needing to do. So we rejected that, and then, and then we'll give Mr. Goins permission to go back and rebid that, just as the air conditioner in that, Fire Academy room. And then, and then try to work out with maybe Mr. Bottoms, I don't know if I think he left, to try to, to try to double up with that room with the auto mechanics. As they're doing their classroom work, they can, they can go into that room and use it, or another room in the school somewhere, and then come back into the auto mechanics room and, and do their hands on. Does that sum up pretty good, Mr. Goins?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask this question?
Ms. Smith?
In, in the room that has the automobiles and the trucks that they work on, is, is there air conditioning there in that room?
No.
But what, do they use big fans?
There's fans. They have fans mounted around that are on the wall, but none of our shops have air conditioner in them.
In all the schools.
And, and that's pretty standard. I've visited some other high schools here recently in their autotech facilities, and based on the size and the garage doors being open a lot of the times, that those rooms are not air-conditioned. But when they go to the classroom phase, as they said, we can either use the Fire Academy or another location, so they can be in air-condition when they're doing the classroom portion of the class. But it's pretty standard that a garage area is not air-conditioned. Mr. Tetter can vouch for that.
But they do open the doors to have fans, right?
Correct.
Correct. And the classroom is just right, just steps away.
Yep. Okay. All right. So we'll put your cooler freezer bid over to action agenda.
Thank you, board members.
I'll make that motion that we move the cooler freezer bid to action.
Okay.
And I second it.
Okay, all in favor? So that will be action agenda, item B, cooler freezer bid. Okay, thank you, Mr. Goins. Discussion item B, discussion of current expense fund two, amendment number two. Ms. Moore?
Yes, sir, you have the amendment number two. When the commissioners approved our budget back in the summer, they did not include the additional supplement to go to five percent. They left it at four and a half. And this board decided that they would appropriate fund balance to make up that difference. And also, they cut out one of our instructional coaches, and at the same time, the board approved that. So when you don't, we completed the budget resolution, we wanted you to approve that first, which you did it recently, the way the commissioners approved it. And then this amendment allows us to actually budget our fund balance to cover those items. So it's increasing the budget by three fourteen eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and appropriating fund balance to do that. So basically, the board had already allowed us to do that, but this amendment just reflects that.
Okay. Would you, do you would like to move this to action?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Make a motion to move that.
Okay, I have a motion to move amendment two to action. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? So this will be action item C, current expense fund two, amendment number two. Okay.
Okay, your federal amendment, budget amendment number three. We're constantly getting funds allotted from DPI. These are federal grants that we've received some additional funding for. You can see title one, we got six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. Our one oh three, supporting effective instruction, one hundred and seventy-eight. The risk pool, that's for our special needs, and that's where Terry has to put in applications for our students that have certain needs, two hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred and four dollars. One eighteen, again, is our special needs targeted assistant, thirteen thousand. And then the one ninety-two is some additional ESTR funding for cyberbullying and suicide prevention of fifty-eight oh twenty-six. And one ninety-three is the SO three, the gaggle grants for technology, eighteen thousand one thirty-three. This is an additional three hundred and seven thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars of federal funding received.
Okay. Board, any questions from Ms. Moore on that? Does this need to go to action?
If we, if, yes, sir, please.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to move the federal fund budget amendment three to action.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor? So that will be action item D, Stokes County Schools Federal Fund Budget Amendment Number Three. Okay. And that brings us to a discussion item, discussion item C, I believe, discussion of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school funding, current expense. Ms. Moore, or Dr. Rice?
She'll start and I'll add in.
Okay, thank you, sir. This is the superintendent's proposed current expense budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And the first sheet that you have, you will see, is just proposed revenue at this time. Any changes that we make, of course, this is subject to change, and it's subject to change once we receive final approval from the county commissioners. The first column you see here is your approved twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and then twenty-two, twenty-three, the request, and then the increase or decrease in your last column. This budget request is for seventeen million oh ninety-one, one eighty-two. That's an increase of two million one oh nine, two oh five. And basically, it comes down for a total of like a fourteen point eight percent increase. And we will go through detail to kind of explain why we're seeing this increase in this proposed budget. The next page you will see is just your summary of what makes up the seventeen million and the percentages. And for example, in salaries and benefits, that's the largest percentage of increase, which makes up fifty-five point twenty-two percent of our request here. And you can come on down. We have, and again, when we get into page by page, you have the new request of three oh five, and I'll explain that. Come on down. You can see, for example, contracted services is six point thirty-eight. And another major one that you will see is our utilities, and the debt that we owe for our energy program makes up seventeen point eighty-eight percent. Operations seventeen point seventeen, and then charter schools two point three oh. And you can see, as you go down each line item, the percentage for the different line items there. And from there, we can go into page one, which is the actual breakdown of that summary. And on page one, we start with our salaries. And again, you have the same format. You have the twenty-one, twenty-two approved, the proposed, and the amount of increase, whether it's an increase or decrease. We're maintaining at this time the same number of local teaching positions, which is twelve and a half. But we were, when we completed last year's budget, we were able to have teachers starting out lower on the scale because of our change in employment. So this is based on like an A three, and we were able to reduce that a little bit at this time. Substitutes have increased, and the reason for that is the state changed the ruling on personal leave, where it used to be a fifty-dollar deduction. Now our teachers will have no deduction, and if they give a reason. So therefore, we're seeing more substitutes being needed, and also with COVID. We're maintaining our social workers. In last year's budget, we had two. You will see the detail that some of the salaries on our certified staff are figured at five percent. You will see classified is figured at two and a half percent. And also, based on legislation for this past year, we're to implement the fifteen-dollar per hour rate increase to be sure that at least our classified employees are at least making fifteen dollars. And as you'll go through this, line item by line item, I've tried to pull out how much that would cost just to do the fifteen dollars to kind of give you an idea of how much that increase would be. And just, I'll go ahead and tell you now, it's sixty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. That's just a mandate from the state just to do our local positions that we have no control over, that that's supposed to be in place July one. But you can come on down. You can see we're maintaining number five, our technology positions that was approved this year. Again, our coordinator, MTSS person and grant writer is maintaining that position. And number seven, you will see our instructional support staff, a slight increase there. That's the line item that we received some state money from, and we have to offset the difference locally. We are hearing, and Dr. Rice has his conversation on this, that we will not be held harmless, but I think that's yet not a definite, but right now, they're saying that we will not be held harmless like we have been for the last two years. What that means is they will look at the best one of two of our ADM when school starts, and it is a possibility based, if your ADM is going down, that you will lose funding in different categories and possibly positions. So, Dr. Rice, am I correct that that could change from legislation?
Yes, ma'am. There are people advocating for us that they would hold us harmless another year, but it is not written in the current legislation.
And with our ADM changing, we're, we would think that we would possibly lose some additional funding. So we've tried to offset those categories where we would, could see that happening. Same thing then on number eight for your principal and assistant principal. Number nine, you will see a slight increase there for the board from five hundred to six hundred and six hundred to seven hundred for the chairperson. You will go over to page two. We're maintaining our three media assistants. You will go over to Page Two. We're maintaining our three media assistants. And this is Number Eleven. You can see where I've broken out the clerical positions, what it would cost to do the two and a half percent and the adjustment for the fifteen per hour. I've tried to break that out where you all could, could see that. So custodians and clerical all tying together, we receive a state allotment. Again, if we're not held harmless, we will probably lose money there. So we've tried to increase and add actually two custodians to kind of offset that. Operations, we're maintaining our positions there. And bus drivers, we only have two employees that have exceeded the state max, and the state will not cover those. Page Three, this board wanting to appropriate last year money for tutoring and also allow for instructional supplies, we're maintaining that sixty thousand. Our longevity, maintain the same amount. Annual leave, we've increased based on what our expenditures have been for this year. Our certified classified supplement, again, we're figuring that at five percent. It's not much of an increase, but right now, it looks like we will have some extra in this year's funding there. So that's why your increase was no more than it is there. Nineteen, our band supplement, we're maintaining that. Coaching, if you remember, we decided a few years ago, the board actually done a scale, and based on their years, there's a range there that they can move up steps once they get to certain ranges. So I have allowed for the step increase if they qualify. And also, Dr. Rice has recommended to increase the coaching scale by five percent. Not all of them choose that as travel. That is an area that they can choose as travel or as salary. So that's why we just do a portion of that subject to retirement and Social Security. Principal supplement, we're recommending to increase the elementary, middle, and high school. And you can see there, the elementary from two thousand to twenty-eight hundred, middle from thirty-two hundred to four thousand, and high from forty-seven to fifty-five hundred, slight increase there. And the same thing if you go down for our assistant principals. So all of that, we've just covered for your total salaries. What makes up that seventeen million, six million four seventy-six, three thirty-two, would be in your salaries. Then Page Four, it's automatic with your salaries. We have to pay Social Security. Most everything is subject to retirement, except like the board salaries and our substitutes and part of that coaching. And we already know that legislation is saying retirement will be increased from twenty-two point eighty-nine percent to twenty-four point nineteen percent. We already know hospitalization from legislation is saying it will increase from seven thousand nineteen per person to seven thousand three ninety-seven. And we're currently covering like ninety-one and fifty-five positions, percent of a position from local. Unemployment, we've been very fortunate. We think the ten so far has covered us. We're good there. And our dental employee match, here you will see that we've maintained. But as we get into new requests, because I know there was a board request to change that, so we'll get over in new request and discuss that, and then maintain our life insurance. We've increased our workers' compensation insurance. It's a good thing to receive federal dollars, but when you receive federal dollars in salaries, they do not pick up the workers' comp costs, so therefore, that hits local. So we've tried to increase this, anticipating roughly how much that would be to cover the federal salaries that we've been paid for this year and, well, basically for next year. You will go to Page Five, and you will see where it's in the, starts the blue. And these, these are new requests. One additional month of employment for four high school counselors. We have the breakdown there, and the cost is thirty-four thousand seven fourteen. Number Two, one additional month employment for three high school athletic directors, twenty-two thousand eighty-eight dollars. One twelve-month maintenance position, fifty-six thousand one twenty-two, and a principal mentor support position, fifty-three thousand eight twenty-five. Number Five, the additional certified classified supplement. It was requested for us to determine what it would cost for the supplement to, for people with twenty-six to thirty years, give them an additional supplement. That's two hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and two dollars. We have sixty-five point ninety percent employees that that would fall in that bracket. And then it was requested just to see what it would cost if you included then anybody over thirty-one-plus years. We had eighteen point oh seven percent positions costing sixty thousand and ten dollars. Then it was discussed, some requests from the board for dental matching increase. And I went back to the two thousand and two thousand and one when we had the dental insurance, and you could see each year how much the increase was for our employees. So in this figure, we went back to two thousand fourteen and fifteen to fifteen sixteen. The annual cost was one sixty twenty. Now, for the current time, it's two seventeen forty-four. So within that timeframe, if the board wanted to make up the difference, it would be fifty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents that you would be actually helping an employee. That additional cost would be thirty-three thousand seven seventy-two. Again, we just went back so many years there to try to see a way to help our employees if you decided to do that. And then on Page Seven, the last new request is materials and consumers for foundation invitation. That's thirty thousand. Now, Dr. Rice, I am correct. These are not in priority order. That's something that will be decided before we send that to the Commissioners. These are just requests as they came in.
Correct. And again, some of these requests, as you said, came from board members.
Right.
Some came from myself. But these are the new requests that were generated in this budget process that we'd like to recommend. But again, the board has the, the final authority in choosing which ones they'd like to carry forward or not. Or if there's something additional, we, we still have time to do that, as long as we get it to the Commissioners before their May fifteenth deadline.
Okay. Are we good so far, ready to continue on?
Are there any of those in the blue area that you'd like a further explanation on at this point?
Any questions, Board?
What does the principal mentor involve?
Well, we, we have had, as you know, several new principals hired recently. And what we would like to do, as an evaluative, evaluative person, it's hard to give a lot of coaching because when somebody, it's hard to say, hey, I need help with this, when somebody evaluates. So what we were thinking about is a part-time retired principal that has some experience that could mentor and coach our, our, our new people. And there was, it's been brought up by several different departments, and we thought that that would be a worthwhile thing if the board approves.
Would it just be at one school?
No, ma'am. Again, it would be a part-time person that would help all new principals, or even if there's a veteran principal that's having some issues, that would be a, a coaching opportunity primarily for principals in their first three years.
And as you can see, their total for the new request is five hundred and twenty-one dollars one thirty-three. On Page Seven, technology, and you will see we've decreased this by two hundred and ten thousand. We have listed all the items that we planned to cover with the four hundred and eighty-eight, four forty. But if you will go over to Page Eight and look at the pink area, you will see why we decreased. And it's because of the funding that we've received from state and federal to offset technology. Now, if those funds had not been available, we would have had to include this additional funding here of five hundred and ninety-eight thousand one hundred and fourteen in our requesting current expense. So that's, that has been a great help. It's both from state and federal funding that we've received. And as I go through here, you will notice that Poplar Springs is highlighted in yellow. And the reason for that is when the Commissioners approved the funding for Poplar Springs, it's the things that I've highlighted, like their wide area network, their utilities, their insurance, that comes from a different fund source. So whenever we submit our budget, we have to keep that line item separate for Poplar Springs for them to know how much that funding's going to be.
Ms. Moore, what is that fund source for Poplar Springs?
It, they call it the Forsyth Tech Funds. That's when, that's what Julia refers to me from the county. It, it runs through the Forsyth Tech, school slash Forsyth Tech Fund is what she, they call it.
Is this the one that they call the four percent fund?
Mm-hmm. I think so, yep.
So where, where does that money come from? Is it?
That's.
Is that a question for them?
Yeah, from Commissioners. And it was just the way it was appropriated as a separate line item.
There, there's a special four percent tax.
Has to go that way.
That is used for this and some for Forsyth Tech. But it was put in before I came. It's been several years ago, well, probably before Poplar Springs was built in, that, that was, that, that fund source would be used for this purpose.
So I'm just trying to understand, it's a four percent of what? Is that sales tax? Is it property tax? Is it?
Property tax, isn't it?
You get your taxes. I think you'll see that's a separate line item on there. And I'm pretty sure that's the way, and it shows that for schools. That's my understanding, that's what that's coming from, which is on your property tax when you get them to pay every year. But I can get, you know, I can let them explain that better and get it back to you where you, since it's their funding, if you need for me to.
I think we do.
Okay. On Page Eight, travel. We follow the IRS ruling, so we're going to fifty-eight point five cents per mile, slight increase there. Page Nine, if you will go down under supplies, materials, and non-capitalized, you will just see, we only have one change there overall, is the media book supplies. I think we just wanted to do a one-time appropriation there, so we're not continuing that after the year we're in now. So your total.
And that, if you remember, was due to COVID. We were not able to have book fairs. And so we supplemented the media centers for what they had lost by not being able to have book fairs. But now, book fairs are back going now, so that's why that's been pulled out.
And I did want to mention that. I would like for you to say that when they get that funding for their book fairs and stuff, that they use it for the stuff in the media center.
It went out as restricted allotment for books.
Well, it should be.
Yeah.
But sometimes, you know, people are looking over into that funding and, you know, trying to take it. And it really should be just for what they're using there, because they're, they're having to use a lot of the funding, you know, for Battle of the Books, buying all those materials, and, you know, things that are broken, all those things that are broken in the media center, and cords and cables and, you know, things that you wouldn't ordinarily think. So they have to count on what money that they get from those book fairs. It's not, it shouldn't be a school funding.
And, and that is a restricted budget code?
It goes out as a restricted allotment, and anything that was spent, Karen had to approve it. And we tried to watch to be sure it was for books and supplies, so.
So you approve those things? Oh, good.
Yeah.
Well, good. Because I know years ago, it wasn't always that way, right?
Right, right. So your total for supplies, materials, and non-counties, three hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars, not much change there. Page Ten, we'll go into contracted services. Slight increase there for like all of our payroll, our accounts payable, human resources, all the software and things that we use there. Anything we pay for policy changes or anything like that would come in your first line item there. Number Two, I bring attention there for our resource officers. We pay for part of that out of our at-risk state funding. And this past year, we had like a hundred and twenty-five thousand carryover. Really, it was a hundred and fifteen, excuse me. So that carryover was applied to help pay for the resource officer invoice this year. We're not projecting that we will have near that much carryover this year, so therefore, we've had to offset that expenditure in this budget. So you will see, we've added a hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars for the resource officers to maintain where we have been. And basically, that is as a result of what we're seeing with an estimation of our state at-risk funding. And then, of course, we've included the resource officer grant match again. We pay, state matches at sixty-six point sixty-seven, and we pay the difference there. And we've already expended all of the grant for this year we're in now. That would just be a continuation. Our maintenance department system-wide for all of our schools, that's just been increased twenty-five thousand, which is probably not enough after we're hearing from Ricky on how much everything's going up. Go on down the rest of those. Our health, attorney, our auditors, our custodian supplies, all of that stayed the same. The Number Ten for your background checks, slight increase there of a thousand dollars, and that's just based on what we've spent so far this year. On Page Eleven, we had included the middle school random alcohol drug testing, but that is not being done, correct, Dr. Rice? So we've.
That's correct.
Uh, not included that in the budget. The Johnson Control Monitoring, we've had to do a slight increase over what we, based on what we're paid this year. And again, we have included now, you know, we, the board in the new request like that year we're in now, added the public information marking as a contracted service. This is maintaining that for the thirty thousand. Under athletics, it was something Dr. Rice had the board to agree to, that we try to help them due to COVID and the fact that they were not able to have as many activities. And we had budgeted seventy-five thousand to help with officials and, and their fuel costs. And based on the fact that, like he said earlier, they're able to do their activities now, so we have not included that in this budget here. So that's decreasing that seventy-five thousand. Staff development, we've done an increase there. Due to COVID, there had not been a lot of staff development allowed, people going to different activities. So we have increased that. Dr. Rice, do you want to add anything there that other than?
As she said, we haven't really gone anywhere in two years, and now things are opening back up. And whether that's the travel, the cost of the conferences, all of that, we are looking at an increase there this year.
Advertising, I hope to maintain there. Printing, maintain. All right, come on down to your dues on Page Twelve. Number Three, we were able to cut back for the accreditation dues there, so that's a decrease of seven thousand three sixty. Your next item is insurance. And due to, you see an increase here of fifty-five thousand dollars, and I hope that's enough. We've really had to do a lot with liability and the fact of technology and being sure that we have coverage in, in case anything should happen there. So you can see that increase overall for insurance is fifty-five thousand. And for Poplar Springs, that would just be their property insurance pulled out separately. Page Thirteen, slight increase telephone, but then based on what we're spending for telephones for operations, we brought that down a thousand. Postage, we're maintaining. All right, we need to talk about utilities. Electrical, right now, based on the, so far, and we've paid bills through the month of February when we worked on this budget. And we were running, it looks like we're paying right at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a month. So it looks like we will be okay there. So we have not increased that particular line item for electrical use because we think we'll have some extra there. But let's look at Number Two, your heating. You can see here that seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and ten, plus we have that energy payment, which is four fifty-six, one eighty-seven. For the both of them, that equals a million two thirty-five, three ninety-seven. Based on the fuel oil gallons we've used, it's based on a hundred and fifty-five thousand gallons, we've done this budget at three ninety-eight a gallon. The last load we received, we just received the invoice, it was four twenty-two a gallon. Propane, we figured for eight thousand gallons at three seventy-five, and natural gas thames, a hundred and one thousand at one thirty-one. And then again, you can see the amount for the energy payment of four fifty-six, one eighty-seven. That will be finalized in December of twenty twenty-five. So that'll be a good thing to get that off of our budget. So you can see how we have figured the heating of the million two thirty-five, three ninety-seven, increase of three hundred fifty-three, three ninety-seven. And as the weeks go on, we might need to monitor this and just kind of see how things are looking at the time. That could be an area that we have to adjust. Water and sewer, based on our expenditures so far this year, I did decrease that one by five thousand. And then again, you can see the electrical heating and water pulled out for Poplar Springs. So your total utilities is three million oh fifty-five, three ninety-seven. On Page Fourteen, operations, we've increased just the gas and oil and tires for our local vehicles by twenty-five thousand, budgeted a hundred and fifty. On Number Two, the estimated amount of our state allotment for yellow buses. On number two, the estimated amount of our state allotment for yellow buses to operate. We've added seven hundred thousand to this line item. We definitely will be going over the budget for what we had budgeted on the three hundred for this year. Mr. Tetter has found out that we are hoping to get a few thousand dollars in contingency to help us for fuel since the rates have been so high. But again, this is an estimate and, um, especially if we are not, um, guaranteed to maintain where we're at this come this year we're in now, we, we definitely think that this will be needed. Repairs to all schools is we slight increase of thirty thousand again, that goes back into the maintenance area for all the schools. Then the last item here is your charter schools, which we have no control over. We figured a hundred and twenty-eight students at two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. The more local dollars you have, the more we have to pay. We have to figure that, what our rate would be per ADM. Thirteen are in virtual public schools, and on that one, we only have to pay seven hundred and ninety dollars per student based on legislation. And the NC Cyber Academy is the same way, twenty-five there at seven ninety. So we've budgeted three hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars for charter schools, and that is an increase of fifty-six, three sixty-eight. And again, if your budget increases, that's going to go up. So all those things that we've talked about on the individual pages here, that's what makes up that summary of the seventeen million, oh ninety-one, one eighty-two that we talked about in the beginning. And I showed you the percentages there and the increase of the two million, one oh nine, two oh five. I know I went over a, a lot of information, but hopefully it will help you kind of follow it when you go back and you review it. And I'm willing to entertain any questions that you all might have at this time.
Board, any questions for Ms. Moore?
And if not today, if Ms. Robinson want to call anytime, I'll be glad to work with them.
One question I had real quick, um, out of the state at-risk funding and the carryover, uh, were there other items that required that funding sort of, um?
Basically.
Over the need for the resource officer?
Basically, your at-risk money is used to operate Meadowbrook, and it takes for all their salaries and benefits. And, uh, it's just a matter of your allotment, what you get from the state. And then we do it, we use it for the resource officers in the past, and again, we will do some of that. We do actually pay either a principal or assistant principal. We're allowed to do that out of part of that money, and we try to get the cheapest, it varies from year to year who that might be. So basically, that is what you use those, those funds for. We do sometimes use, uh, some of it for tutoring, and that's, that's what, that covers most of all of that. And we do use the communication, is it Bright Arrow you call it? The, the software that we have to pay for that, that comes from at-risk as well.
So the main increase was?
The fact that we do not have the carryover and the allotment, yes ma'am.
And being used at Meadowbrook and the things that you just named off, okay.
I have a question, but probably Mr. Goins would need to answer this one. Did Johnson Controls give any reason for a seven thousand dollar increase? Any justification for it?
Well, they still report for us every year, and it's to do our, uh, service contract. So when they do have to come out, that, uh, we get a better rate, quicker service.
And that is based on what we're paying this year.
How much quicker?
Well, it's a week, about come out, most time the next day.
So Board, if we have any other questions, do Ms. Moore be available?
Yes.
Uh, caller anytime. Ms. Moore, thank you.
Thank you.
That was a very, I don't see how you keep up with all those numbers.
Thank you.
I tell you, that's, uh, that's enough to make your head swim. Very good job, thank you, Ms. Moore. So that brings us to our, uh, superintendent's recommended capital budget request. Dr. Rice, you gonna do that?
I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Goins and Mr. Goins.
With Board members in your packet, we'll start with the superintendent's recommended capital budget. Uh, we always put a hundred thousand dollars in there just for emergencies, uh, system-wide. Uh, the fall protection for mulch, we did increase that from twenty-five to fifty thousand. And that's based on what we spent this year, we've already spent over forty-seven thousand dollars putting mulch in this year. The hard, we got the gyms in there for the hardwood floors, give that to the schools to maintain those. Uh, number four, uh, this is based on twenty-five dollars a square foot, foot, uh, new roof for Pine Hall. New roof for Pinnacle on the main, uh, the main building in gym. And Chestnut Grove, number six, that's the media center, uh, the two-story building and that lobby area. Um, number seven would be the fire alarm, uh, for Germantown, we discussed that the other day. Combine those two old systems into one new one.
Mr. Goins, has that been completed?
No, sir.
That's not, okay. There was something at Germantown that I think, I thought you said.
At King Elementary.
At King Elementary, the phone system that they had requested, we, we've already taken care of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Chestnut Grove, uh, we're looking at updating the phone system there. Uh, also at Piney Grove Middle, uh, and Southeastern Middle. Uh, Lawsonville, uh, septic system upgrades, that's the, once we go to that school, I can explain that a little bit better. I have a drawing that shows what a siphon, but the old siphon bays, how they work, and upgrade that to, uh, pumps, same situation at North Stokes. Uh, Nancy Reynolds, this is to upgrade the HVAC controls that they have. We don't have Johnson Controls there. We have Allerton Controls. Uh, this is the first major upgrade we've had to do at that school since it's been put in. Number fourteen, school nutrition, uh, putting a walk-in cooler freezer, that would be at, uh, Chestnut Grove. And again, uh, just to kind of keep up with replacing some tables at, uh, in the cafeterias around the school for the, for number fifteen. Number sixteen is, uh, two maintenance vehicles. Uh, we have, we have several vehicles over two hundred and sixty thousand miles. Uh, number seventeen is to do the band equipment, the twelve thousand that we've done this year. I think Ms. Moore said we'd base that, that on ADM, is that correct? Uh, number eighteen is the canopy over the picnic area at, at Sandy Ridge. Uh, and then the new on and in front of the gym at Sandy Ridge, we looked at that the other day. Number twenty would be a two-post lift for the paint bay, uh, to utilize that space and have the transportation department start servicing more of our, um, uh, service vehicles and, uh, other than just buses. And maintenance, I'm hearing through DPI that we're gonna have to do a lead-based asbestos assessment. Uh, I talked with the company EI that we worked with in the past, and they gave me an estimate, this is what it would cost to, to comply with that. Uh, and Walnut Cove to put, replace the carpet in the office area. Uh, that carpet is worn and torn, and we felt like it's a trip hazard. Any questions on those?
At the bus garage, I see we're wanting a lift there and everything. But doesn't a lot of that come from the state as far as the funds and stuff? Uh, like if we take the county vehicles, do they not have to, we have to reimburse the state?
If they work on it, we'll have to reimburse them. They don't have the proper equipment over there to, the old lift they had was, was damaged and unsafe, correct, Mr. Tetter? It was condemned.
I guess my question is, if we're gonna reimburse the state for working on our vehicles, why should we buy the state a lift?
Well, the state doesn't maintain cars and things like that. So what we're looking at, instead of like going to a private place to do oil changes, we would do that ourselves, and what we would reimburse the state for the hours would be, still be a lot less than what we're paying for an oil change. So we're looking for a long-term savings with buying a lift, being able to do that.
How much does it cost the state charges for an oil change?
Depends on the number of hours that they would need to turn it.
Say, uh, Toyota Camber like Dr. Rice drives.
I don't have to send you that, I don't have that up front, but when we initially put this in, it's gonna, it makes it easier to change, to make service to maintenance trusts and the state trusts that it apparently lay them around, change the oil and fluids. And we can't do anything to lower the bills. And labor at all of the shops we're going to is, is getting high.
Gotcha.
So I see savings by doing this.
I know what I pay for, you know, a comparable car, fifty-four bucks. That's the reason I'm asking.
Well, let's say you have a fifteen dollar an hour employee, and it takes twenty minutes. It'd be a third of fifteen dollars is what we would reimburse the state.
Just want to make sure, because I knew that the state got, you know, took our dollars back. Just want to make sure we won't buy them state a lift. They got a lot more money than we do.
But they're stingy, right?
Any, uh, questions for Mr. Goins?
Would that be painting over or removal, uh, with this lead paint assessment? I mean, is it actually be doing the work or just coming in and?
That's just coming in doing an assessment, to see if we have lead paint, and if so, where it would be.
Okay. I can only imagine the cost that could be involved, uh, if that all, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Goins.
Moving on to the, the recommended athletic grant budget request. Uh, as you recall, we got one point seven five, uh, million dollars, um, to do athletic requests. One thing that we would like to do, there's currently five hundred thousand dollars in the budget, is to take that five hundred thousand, that's what number one is, North Stokes Track, and use, use that five hundred thousand dollars, uh, is that. South Stokes, six hundred thousand for that track. And then look at North and South as redoing the tennis courts and lights. West Stokes just going and do the, a court repair there, uh, on that. Uh, and North Stokes fence for the baseball field backstop and Chestnut Grove baseball fence and backstop. In the five hundred thousand, we do have a list coming up that what we would spend that funding for out of this year's budget.
So basically, in our capital budget for this year, we have the, uh, North Stokes Track, uh, at five hundred thousand, so we're taking it out of the, uh, this year's capital budget.
Putting it in the athletic grant.
Put it in this, uh, and this athletic grant is a grant that, uh, we received from the state. And quite frankly, uh, thanks to, uh, Kyle Hall, our representative.
Yes.
Uh, gave us a million, seven fifty, uh, to improve, uh, athletic facilities. And that's the money here that we're looking at for, uh, to improve the athletic facilities, is the grant from the state for a million, seven fifty.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Board, any questions about any of those? I, I have one question, actually. The tennis court repair at West Stokes, I understand the tennis court is about six inches out of level. At West Stokes, from what I've heard, I'm not a tennis player, I don't look like a tennis player, and I'm not. But, um, are they gonna try to level that court up, or what are they gonna?
No, they would come in just to.
Repair.
Patch the existing cracks, the level would stay the same. When you get into the cracks, you get into the subsurface, that's where the issue's at. And at North and South, that's what we would look at doing ours, tearing those courts up and starting the subsurface coming up with new courts. But at West, it would just pa- patch the existing asphalt. So if it's currently out of level, that wouldn't fix any of that.
Do, do we need to check into that?
We'll check into it further. West Stokes told us that their court's in pretty good shape and still has several years of life left. Just ask that we help patch and, uh, fix some spots that may be cracked, so we'll certainly look into it to see.
I, 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 I'm, I've just heard that, uh, the court's out of level, but, but I don't know.
Trust me, it is.
It is.
You're playing uphill or downhill, one way or the other.
Yeah.
I, I have yet to figure out why it was built on the side.
I mean, if it's, and I've heard a number of six inches out of level. And if that is the case, and we may need to look at that. I know, uh, we've got another list coming up here of, uh, of wants or needs. Uh, but, uh, we may want to look at that, um, as far as trying to help them with that tennis court. If we can make an adjustment to this, we need to before.
Sure.
Our next meeting. Okay, Mr. Goins?
Moving on, the, the request of revision to the twenty-one, twenty-two capital budget. This is how we'll be looking at spending part of that five hundred thousand that's currently in this year's budget. Uh, going down, uh, looking at a zero turn for Meadowbrook, Mount Olive, Pinnacle, North Stokes and West Stokes. Doing a reel mower, uh, at South Stokes. Southeastern a vacuum, West Stokes a floor stripping machine. West Stokes, uh, a traditional, what we call a floor scrubber. Piney Grove rattling mats, uh, Southeastern baseball dugout roofing. North Stokes, uh, weight room flooring, West Stokes softball school board, Chestnut Grove a softball school board, Piney Grove, uh, softball and baseball school board, plus a football school board at Piney Grove. And then basketball school boards, that would be two at Piney Grove. Southeastern a baseball school board, Southeastern a softball school board, and also a baseball school board at Southeastern. And then a gator for North Stokes, South Stokes and West Stokes. And then South Stokes, athletic washer and dryer. And that total comes to three thirty-one, nine fifty. Uh, that gives us a little leeway with that five hundred thousand.
And Board members, I, I do want to say, once we received notification that we were allocated this amount of money, we met with our athletic directors and principals and had them complete a list, a needs and a wants list. And so we're able to, with this particular revised budget, we're able to cover many of the requests that have been submitted from our schools, so.
And the grant is restricted to certain things. And so while these items, i- if you notice, have a very much of an athletics feel to, to many of these items, we're not allowed to use the grant money to pay for this. But if we can use the five hundred thousand for the track, that frees up some capital money that we can pay for, for these items as well. And so that's why this list is recommended. Again, there would be, um, roughly a hundred and sixty thousand left in this. But the way costs are going, we, we just kind of, we're hesitant to max out pricing right now, um, a- as we're in this crazy time of price increases.
Any other questions, Board members?
Yeah, I would like to, uh, one thing, uh, we have, uh, five zero-turn mowers, uh, some other things here. I don't know how much of this, these items we can buy in county. Uh, but I would like, uh, for us to, to, to try really hard, uh, to, to spend this money in county when we can.
Well, in, in the past, Mr. Robinson, what I have done is when I've bid out mowers, I have invited people in the county to bid.
And in the past, I think we've bought them out of county sometimes too, right?
They were always low bid. The ones when we purchased them out of county, in the last few years, well, there's an individual in Walnut Cove that never bid.
But are we, are we tied to one certain brand?
No, we've just been buying Bobcats in the fut- in the past because of the reliability and the good experience we've had with them in the past. We did look at buying a different brand, well Husqvarna's, and looking into it. Uh, they were a little cheaper, but when you looked at the decks, the decks weren't as thick a material as the Bobcats. So we felt like with, you know.
So are we thinking that the Husqvarna's, the decks are gonna give out in two years?
I don't know when the decks would give out. I know we hadn't had any issues with the decks on the Bobcats, and they're a lot thicker.
It, it's a thicker deck that if you hit sidewalks, you hit stumps, you hit different things, it's just the thickness of it.
It was a thicker, what they call la- like a laminated deck, it was layers of steel versus just one press. And their, their layers was thicker than the Huskies, Husqvarna's, uh, just stamped out in one thickness.
Right. I know, I have a Husqvarna, it's a commercial-grade, uh, zero-turn. And, um, I have to take it out to the farm and mow, and I mow, uh, stumps and rocks and just about anything that gets in my way. And my deck has been just fine. Hasn't, uh, hasn't come apart, hasn't broke, hasn't done anything, so keep on mowing. And I've had it for several years now, so, uh, I would like for us to, to really try to spend our money in Stokes County if we can. We have to go to a different brand? If we have to go to a different brand, I'm okay with a different brand.
Yeah, we did this with Pine, when Poplar Springs was getting their mower. They had a big field, we invited a field day, everybody brought their mower and tried. I mean, the, trying to select just based on the thickness of one piece of metal, nah, I'm not real sure I agree with that.
Yeah, me neither.
They have the same trans, the, and I know this, the Husqvarna and the Bobcat both have the same transmission and same engine package. So now you're talking about peripherals. Same manufacturer, so it's, you're not changing. You crank it, engine starts, you go forward or reverse transmission. If the, if they're the same manufacturer, same part number, interchangeable. I've got a little question there now, Toro, the, it. Toro, the, the proprietor, they can mow a little faster. I've been looking at mowers, as you can tell. So I would suggest we understand that we're not locked into just one brand because we've had good success. And I've got a Bobcat and I've had very good success with it. But I've had a Ford, a Chevrolet and a Dodge, and I've had good success with every one of them. And now I drive a Kia. So if we're not willing to look and see what's best on the market each time we're buying, we're doing ourselves a disservice.
Yeah.
Several years ago, when that was done at Poplar Springs, the mowers was rated Gravely's number one and Bobcat is number two. When we went to the Gravely's, we got one person to buy Gravely's from in this area. So that was the reason we chose Bobcats, because you have more dealers in this area that we get a better price on. So that was here, Mr. Birds did that when they did Poplar Springs. But Bob, Gravely was number one and Bobcat was number two.
We'll look to do that and understand the board's wishes.
Yes.
But don't you have to um bid all these out?
That's what I have done in the past.
I do like Mr. Rogers' idea of maybe having a mow day. Let's just invite them all over to one of our schools and um try them out.
Okay.
See what they, how they do.
We can go to that third field at Germanton that's really grown up, and we'll see who's really got the best mower.
Yeah.
Whoever's willing to put it out there, we'll find out what's under that grass.
I was thinking North Stokes, that way you can put them on a hill. We did do a, a demonstration of a, it was a track mower at North Stokes. Where you stand in this remote control, it's like a little tank you mow with. But we can't afford that, it's like thirty thousand dollars for one mower.
Board, any questions about the requested revision to the capital budget?
I was looking here at these Gators. Do they have to be a Gator? Can we not buy a Polaris Ranger?
That's a question that Mr. Jones can answer, he met with the athletic director.
Again, we, that's a generic term for us so, that we understand, but that type of equipment's what we would bid out. And so, no.
Okay.
I know the Polaris Ranger's a real good piece of equipment, you know.
Okay, any other questions, board?
Board, the, the final set of things are other items that have been requested uh from either principals or maintenance that you can see as an additional twenty-four and a half million dollars in funding with a large proportion of that, nineteen million uh for HVAC upgrades as Mr. Goins and Richie Roberts wanted to be on the record of saying this stuff could go out at any time. Uh, and while we will certainly let it go until it's time, that at any time, any of that stuff can go. And to replace that type of stuff uh would be around two million dollars at least in a high school or large middle school and a million and a half dollars in an elementary school.
If the HVAC goes out.
Correct. And so we wanted you to, that to be on your radar, that those are needs that are pending, but we can't put an exact date on it. Uh, all of the ones listed are, are probably out of their normal life cycle as it is.
Now, as part of, I know Johnson's controls, obviously, is more control-based and efficiency, but do they give an analysis of your equipment and the life and projections?
They just have, they run the controls, but not the mechanical part.
Okay.
So it's kind of like, a- and, and Ricky, certainly, don't roll your eyes, that'd be, correct me. But, you know, the controls like your thermostat in your house.
Yeah.
That's your box. Your stuff downstairs or outside, those are the mechanical things. And the control just controls how mu- I mean, when it comes on, when it goes off.
Like I said, I understand all of that. That's why I'm saying it would be nice, though, if they did.
Well, that would be more, and, and I don't know who makes chillers. It's not like in your house, maybe Trane or Goodman or whatever, uh, for us, it's different places.
You're looking at fifteen to eighteen years is what manufacturers tell you is a life cycle of equipment. We got some equipments thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three years old, over thirty-three years old.
Have you done a report on that? It seems like I've seen, no, anything that shows the years it was put in, the age on the equipment?
I did give the board something, we called it facility information.
Okay.
That kind of the top, and I just had HVAC listed as twenty years. Because that's what your chillers typically last.
Okay.
And then anything that was in the red exceeded that date.
Okay.
Uh, how many centrifugal chillers do we have and how many air-cooled chillers do we have?
Yes.
Four.
Got four left?
Yeah.
Can you maybe look back and re thin that?
At uh West Stokes to replace a one chiller last year? Three, four hundred thousand?
I was thinking three fifty.
It was three hundred and some thousand dollars.
And so we got four right there that could go at any time.
Mount Olive is getting to where it needs to be replaced.
So, you know, we're looking at one point two million dollars in the next year or so, just in chillers alone.
Well, what concerns me, you take Mount Olive, the, the mechanical equipment inside. The air handle inside is forty-seven years old.
Yeah. So we need several million dollars just at Mount Olive alone.
So actually, this list that we have here, it's uh, the twenty, twenty-four million, twenty-four million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Most of all of that could be on our capital budget at any time this year, next year. Those, those are items that really we need to do to the schools now.
Think it could just pop up?
Yeah, I mean, we, th- those are things that we really should be uh having on our budget to try to go ahead and work towards repairing them, replacing them. Uh, but we know that twenty-four million, six seventy-three, six seventy-five is probably out of the question for us right now as well. So we just want to list those, uh, put them out there, let everybody see it and understand that this is a, these are items that we need in our school. This is, and this is the most pressing needs. It's not all of them, right?
Correct.
It's not, this twenty-four million, six seventy-three is not all the needs. Those are just the most pressing needs. We could probably come up with another list of another twenty-five million that uh that also needs to be done.
Well, Mr. Robinson, too, when you start looking at the age of the facility, you know, it's more than the HVAC equipment, it's more than the windows. You start looking to the, your underground utilities, your copper water lines that's been underground fifty-seven years, going on sixty years.
Right.
You know, at some point, we're gonna start having trouble with those. And you fix one leak, it just goes to the next weakest spot. You fix it, it just goes to the next weakest spot.
Yeah.
That's what concerns me.
And that's not counting aesthetics. I mean, how many of our buildings could use painting? How many could use bathroom upgrades? How many of them could use a lot of things like that to just help the aesthetics of where we're sending our children every day?
I do believe we were told we would be included in the county building assessment. Has there been follow-up on that?
Yes, I followed up with the county on that, and while they agreed to do it, it was not put in as a budget number item.
Okay.
So there was no funding put toward it. So Ms. Shaver said that she would put it in their budget item this year, uh, and we'll see if the commissioners will approve it. But yes, we have asked for two years.
Somewhat of a verbal agreement.
It was, but there was no, when they went back and checked the minutes and checked the budget, there was no money put toward it to have this done for our schools. So she will do that again this year. And I do think there's a big advantage to have the same company do it that did the county buildings that does ours. So that our commissioners understand what all the needs are from the same trusted source. At the same time, I'm getting names of some other people that do these things if the county doesn't do it, because we need to. But the, they're the county buildings.
Right.
And so the, the county is charged with our maintenance and facilities, and so they, she told me that she would include it in their budget for this year.
Thanks.
Uh, and, and we'll certainly follow up with that again, but that will be in her budget request.
Thank you. Mr. Goins, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, if we have any other questions, uh, Mr. Goins will be available. Uh, feel free to reach out to him at any time. So that brings us to a discussion item D, a discussion of kindergarten registration.
Board members, uh, in your packet is a list of schools. And what I have done there, in addition to the kindergarten registration numbers, is I have bumped up everybody from the current PMR up one grade level and then entered the kindergarten registration numbers. And the far right column will tell you what that net is. So for example, Germanton um has a net of an increase of two. And you can clearly see that in those two columns there, that they had twenty-nine for kindergarten enroll, kindergarten registration and twenty-seven in the fifth grade, or twenty-nine and twenty-seven in the fifth grade. So the fifth grade leaving, the kindergarten coming in, has two more than that. One that I would like to draw your attention to is Pine Hall. Uh, they are at a negative fourteen. Their projected enrollment next year would be eighty-six, which does fall below the state recommendation and the state, what they say will pay for a principal. Uh, that number is one hundred per school. Now, that doesn't mean that the state won't pay for the principal in this coming school year because that funding is actually based on the previous year's fifth month, I believe, uh, ADM. So at that point this year, it was above a hundred. So they will pay for a principal next year. But if they stay in that eighty-six range for the entire school year, the state would quit funding the principal there. So I wanted to make sure that that was brought to your attention. Uh, also, if you look at those numbers with what the state allot teachers at, um, every student in that school would be in a combo class this year. They would be down to, I believe, four teachers.
Projected for this next school year at Pine Hall.
Starting twenty-two, twenty-three.
With like eleven in some classes.
Well, it wouldn't be eleven in some classes, you would take eleven kindergartners.
Eleven and put them together and have a combo, yes, sir.
So there would not be a straight grade level class there. You would have to take some of the first graders and put them with the kindergartners, and some put them with the second graders. Then you would have to put some third graders with the fourth graders and some fourth graders with the fifth graders. And so every student there would be in a combo class. That was also, if you think back to your capital budget, our roofing priorities, our first roof in our priority list was a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar roof at Pine Hall. So that is, you know, I wanted to make sure you had full disclosure as we get into making these decisions.
Have we cross-referenced this with the population study that was done?
The population study didn't go too much into individual schools, but yes, sir, it does, of the population decline um at our schools and in that area. But they did not give us a projected kindergarten enrollment for this year. But in live birth, in the southeast quadrant, yes, sir, it was down.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Rice on the kindergarten registration? Okay. Let's move on to the item E, discussion of water cooler bids. Looks like we got Mr. Goins again.
Yes, uh, board members, in your packet, uh, you should have the bid tabulation for the water cooler bids. Uh, I got Mr. Johnson uh to put this bid out, we placed it on our website and send it to uh potential bidders. You can see all the bidders that we sent it to. Uh, we only received bids back from two people that were huge supply. The, and I just bid out one of each, just so we have the flexibility to go if we needed to buy extra. And uh, so we can get those at nine hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents. That's for the, the HTO filling station and then the glass uh fill levers. That was just the ones that went on existing water coolers for one thirty-eight, sixty. And estimating, we're probably looking at around twenty-four thousand, uh, just right around twenty-five thousand dollars to do what we need to do here, and we had budgeted fifty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. Because originally, the qu- the price I got for the coolers was eighteen hundred dollars until we bid them out. Uh, I would recommend that we could move this to action, to move forward with purchasing these, by the amount that we have listed here, and that gives us the flexibility to go back and add some as needed. Now, this does not include the ones we included for West Stokes and one at Chestnut Grove because they have specific water coolers, the ones that are recessed back in the wall, and we have to buy those specifically to fit those water coolers. These universals will not fit, fit those.
Okay. So you, you're wanting to recommend huge supply?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You go with the low bid, yes, sir.
And not for Chestnut Grove and what?
West Stokes and one area of Chestnut Grove, the two-story building at Chestnut Grove, they have the recessed coolers that's back in the wall, and we have to go back to that manufacturer to buy those specifically for those water coolers. A universal like these here will not fit.
And just buying those few would not reach the threshold of needing a board approval for a bid package?
No.
And one thing on this too, board, is uh, my understanding that the uh, the PTO at Germanton, I think at Pinnacle Elementary also, Ms. Moore, has, uh, had purchased a water cooler for their schools. And we had discussed about uh, uh, having uh, having Ms. Moore reimburse those two PTOs uh, for those water coolers out of local funds, is that correct?
Where we're at on that since the K was over, not even this school year, talk about Rice, and we give them the other option of what they need for the same bag. They're supposed to be given with a PTO and letting them know. So they're going to get the amount they need to withstand and otherwise.
Right.
Okay.
So the PTO's took it upon herself to go ahead and put their water coolers in. And uh, we didn't really feel it was appropriate if we're buying all the schools' water coolers that we should do something back for those PTO's that spent their own money, so.
I agree.
Is what Ms. Moore's saying is, they may not get the reimbursement for the water cooler, but they may get something else. Okay, we'll just try to even it up for, make it better.
They will get same value.
Right.
Is that, which, that's not factored in here, of course, but, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Goins? Okay. Uh, takes us over to uh.
Are we gonna?
Did you want to move this to action?
If we could.
I can make the motion.
Okay, do I have a motion to move this to action?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to move this water cooler bid uh to action.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, now let's go to discussion item F, uh, discussion of math textbook adoption process, K through eight. Mr. Rose?
Yes, sir. Thank you, board members. Uh, just want to share with you wherever you're at in process of looking at new textbooks for the upcoming school year. First of all, I went into the state list and we found that it was honestly lacking. Um, there were three major resources listed. One of them was only for K six. And then the other two were with one company. And when I reached out to that company, they recommended a product that was not on the state list. So at that point, uh, I reached out to neighboring counties that had recently gone through the process, got information from them on their processes, uh, looked at the ones that we liked and aligned our process from there. I reached out to Mr. Johnson in terms of an RFP. We had that posted Sunday, March twenty-seventh. I've had multiple companies reach out to me in regards to the information for a proposal, and this is what I have shared with them. Um, they were given a deadline for questions. I had received all of those and responded to those today. Then they are to submit the final quote and information to me on April fourteenth. I have reached out to our principals and asked for selection members from their math departments to come with us on April twenty-ninth and to hear from the vendors. Selected vendors who reached the criteria within the ed-ready reports will be invited to come and present to our staff members. We will have samples laid out from each one of those vendors. We'll hear from those vendors and our teachers will go through and sample those throughout the day and look at those. And they will fill out a rubric um to assess that particular resource. Following that, they will go back to their staff, present, take these samples as well. And we will do a vote on the selected resource. And then my goal would be to have a quote and a recommendation from our elementary and middle schools for you for May sixteenth. Again, if you walk through, I have the information there for their timeline, the way that they can um, the breakdown for the cost proposal. The rubric is an attachment within the document. And then I did ask Ms. Barker about the technology components as well as the accessibility. I talked with Mr. Terry Collins about that as well. And then I'd like to hear from the companies on what professional development they offer and how that may be customized from there. Currently, the state is looking over and vetting their nine twelve resources. So that is one that I would like to look at for next year, once they finish their process. But for this year, I would like to go ahead and move forward with our K eight adoption. And like I said. And like I said, have our teachers vet those, look through those and have a recommendation to our board for the May meeting.
Okay.
Do you all have any questions for me in the process where we are at currently?
Board, any questions for Mr. Rose on this?
Are you familiar or know of um, you know, different books that you're interested in in particular?
So what I will share with you, Ed Reports is a vetting company and they grade it out um, on how it's aligned, the rigor of it, the usability. And really, if a resource does not score the highest level in all of those, I wouldn't consider them for our county. Um, this is a major vetting company that we're looking at. So as I've received these um, requests for our information, I've gone back through those Ed Reports um, to look at those and compare. Also, we do have samples that have been sent from some of the companies. All the ones that um, have submitted or have requested our information to continue on in the process are to be sending samples to us. We're collecting all those in an empty classroom over at Southeastern. I've reserved their media center for April twenty-ninth for our teachers to be there. And also the vendors are aware that April twenty-ninth will be our day. So if you are invited to participate with us, it will be there. But yes, that's, that's our initial vetting. It's just, these are the resources that Ed Report says are the top resources without deficit.
And ours had kinda aged out or due to the change in the curriculum recently, we ne- we were prompted to.
They are extremely dated.
Right.
It's been a long time.
To adapt, okay. Okay, alright.
What time will that be on the twenty-ninth?
Um, it will be full day. Um, I'd already talked about getting subs for the day to cover for those teachers. I would like to possibly start as early as eight o'clock with vendors, depending on the number that we have. And then for the afternoon, just look through the resources, use our rubric and score through that.
What school were you having at?
I would do this at Southeastern. Honestly, they had more empty space. Um, there was one room that used to be, I believe, an in-school suspension room. And it is right next to the door. It's not being currently used. So I was able to store the materials there. Um, and then I can transfer all those over and get the media center set up for that day.
Any other questions for Mr. Rose?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Excited about that. Thank you.
Uh, discussion item G, uh, school nutrition, twenty-two, twenty-three bid process. Mr. Brown?
Good afternoon, board, or evening now. Just wanted to go over the upcoming bid process. We've got a number of bids and rollovers for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. All of our contracts are good for one year, all of our bids are good for one year. They can be rolled over for another year upon agreement with the vendor and the school district for a maximum of four rollovers. We've had a number of vendors decline to roll over this year, the biggest one being US Foods. They're our grocery and our paper vendor. Just found out today that our ice cream vendor, Hershey's, declined the rollover as well. The way the contracts are written, they can't increase price above a certain percentage without a- and roll over the contract. So they're seeking us to rebid with them. Grocery and paper bids have been sent with the North Carolina Purchasing Alliance to a number of vendors. Waiting to hear back from that. That'll be in May. All other requests for bids and rollover letters are being reviewed by Mr. Johnson and we're looking to send those out to potential companies after spring break. Looking at this list, as I said, US Foods is our current groceries and paper product supplier, really hoping that we can come to an agreement on that one. Pepsi's the other one that's, we're having to rebid. We've reached our maximum rollover on that. Again, hoping to stay with Pepsi so we're not replacing. They own most of the coolers in the schools and we would have to have them come in and remove them and then a new vendor place new equipment in there. So I'm kinda hoping that we can get Pepsi back on board. The produce is a rollover. Our chemical supplier we've been with, they've, we've reached the end of that contract. And so we're trying to roll over again with, or rebid with that one. Our pet dairy has requested a, a rebid, again, due to pricing and the increase in uh, costs. And then our ice cream, as I said, just found out today, we're gonna have to rebid with that one. And then our individual pizzas and our hood cleaning, we're looking to roll over those contracts. Board, have any questions?
Any questions?
Are there any local companies that do the hood cleaning? Or are those out of area?
Hood Plus is, they're either King or Rural Hall.
Oh, okay.
I'll have to find out that one for you, for sure.
Just curious, that's okay.
Um, I know that um, Foster Cavanaugh's is out of Raleigh. Um, other than that, the pet is a local and so was Hershey's.
So I guess in most of these, the bids and new contracts will probably increase.
Yes, sir.
Uh, do we have any idea how much?
The information that we got from US Foods, when they declined the rollover, they told us it used to cost fifty dollars for their driver to stop at a location. And it's up to a hundred and fifty, both their fill in the labor and the gas and all that kinda stuff. Looking at, we haven't gotten back costs yet. So part of the bid process is we tell them how much we anticipate using. They'll go through, all the vendors will go through and they'll enter their pricing and then we'll get that back and we'll get that back in May. We've already seen a, a increase in cost across the board though.
Uh, groceries is uh, US Foods the only one we'll bid that with?
Uh, it'll be the um, it'll be US Foods, the groceries, the paper products.
But is, is US Foods the only company or where we?
There's, there's Cisco and then there's a, another smaller vendor, but I don't know that they'll be able to, and I, and I sent it to them as well. I'm not sure that they would be able to, we s- US Foods holds a lot of our USDA products in a warehouse and as we need it, they ship it to us. I'm not sure that the other vendor has the capacity to store that product.
But it is an open process and if somebody came in that could meet our demand of how much we needed for less price, we would certainly go with them.
Hmm.
So we're not limited to US Foods, but they traditionally work with schools.
They do.
Yeah, okay. It's not an easy contract for a lot of companies.
It, it's not. And there's a lot of minutia working with the state and working with the USDA product. Um, a- and for US Food to even be on the NCPA bid, they have to win that award with the, with the purchasing alliance to be able to, to show that they're one of the lowest bidders.
Okay. Alright, any other questions for Mr. Brown? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Uh, discussion item H, uh, discussion of iReady Quote. Mr. Rose?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to share the information with the school board in terms of our iReady Quote. I had reached out to them to receive a one and three-year potential option. There was really no difference on the yearly cost with that. One would just solidify and remain the same so that you could avoid the inflation. My recommendation at this time would be to move forward with the one-year contract for iReady to get that for our schools. And you will see that this does include the toolbox, which is the online resource. In addition to the testing and the personalized learning pathway, there are toolbox lessons that um, have been of tremendous um, value to us in terms of some of the intervention potential that we have with those and then also through summer school uh, last year. Pulling our lesson straight out there, it was wonderful. I'll entertain any questions on the iReady Quote at this time.
Any questions, board?
Is this something you need us to act on tonight?
Um, that would be fine if you would like to move it to action. Um, the quote you can see is good for a, a while. So you know, that's, that's not changing.
Okay.
I certainly welcome it away.
I know you've given past presentations on what you felt was the benefit associated with this program. Yep.
And we believe that.
As well as the state department.
A lot of our growth data that was phenomenal this year, iReady had a lot to do with that.
This is kicking it down the can.
Okay, we have a motion to move the uh.
Make a motion to move it to action.
iReady Quote to action. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. That will be action item F, approval of the iReady Quote.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. That concludes our discussion agenda. And that will take us into our action agenda. Uh, action item A, approval personnel. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve personnel and coaching.
And coaches. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of uh, personnel and coaches. All in favor? Aye. Action item B, cooler and freezer bid. Do I have a motion?
I'll make, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the uh, and approve the uh, cooler bid.
Cooler freezer.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for the cooler freezer bid. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Action item C, current expense fund two, amendment number two. As presented by Ms. Moore. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the current expense two, amendment two.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Agenda item D, Stokes County Schools Federal Fund Budget Amendment Number Three, as presented by Ms. Moore. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the federal fund budget amendment three.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Uh, action item E, water coolers, fountains, uh, contract or, I'm sorry, bid uh, as presented by Hughes Supply by Mr. Goins. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the water cooler bid to the Hughes Company as presented by Mr. Ricky Goins.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And action item F, approval of iReady Quote, presented by Mr. Rose.
Make a motion to approve the iReady one-year contract that's presented by the CFO, Doug Rose.
Have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that concludes our action agenda. Brings us to the information and announcements. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, uh, if you'll note, we do not have a board meeting in April, a second board meeting. Our next meeting will be held in May. On May the second, it'll be a work session at eight-thirty AM. I do want to note that our students and staff that follow our traditional calendar will celebrate obviously Good Friday, this, this coming Friday and then spring break the following week. Hope that all of our students and staff have a good and enjoyable spring break with their families. I do wanna call your attention to some upcoming events taking place this week. Camp London, if you haven't been a part of that, Mr. Marshall over at London Elementary does a great job immersing students into historical events and uh, I think this event in particular was even featured on the CBS Evening News some years ago. And so it's a fantastic event. I encourage you to attend if you can. That'll be held this Wednesday and Thursday. The Special Olympics will be held also this Thursday, April the fourteenth. The opening ceremonies will begin at nine o'clock AM and that event is held at West Oaks High School. And then in May, we have Math Fair Awards, Regional Elementary Battle of the Books and a retiree reception on May nineteenth. Additionally, in your packet, you'll find fundraisers for information, field trips, six-month PMR and calendars. And that's all that I had, Mr. Board Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. So our next board meeting will be May the second, eight-thirty AM. It will be a work session. Okay, Dr. Rice, anything else?
No, sir.
Board, so we're uh, we uh, do need to go back into closed session. So uh, at this time, I'll need a motion to go to close.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session.
Okay, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll stand in recess for five minutes. Hey, uh, Mr. Jones, what was the uh, retirement party, I guess?